This time I'd like to call over the regular scheduled meeting of the City Rocky Mount. And as we, as we set up for our prayer today, I'd like for everybody to pause and think and keep Trace Christman's family and thoughts and prayers, you know, following his untimely death this past Sunday afternoon. He was known for his love, family, his dedication, hard work, and his thriving desire to learn every day. Trace made an everlasting impact on those who knew him in the district of the city. May his name relive all. So if y'all please stand and observe a moment of silence. Thank you. It's time I ask the City Court, if you'll please draw a roll.
Councilman Ryan?
Here.
Blackwell?
Here.
Yeah.
TJ Walker?
Here.
Doltrich?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Jabaris Walker?
Here.
Okay, great. I bring this item number four on our agenda, which is consideration of the minutes of regular scheduled meeting of the hall meeting, which was held on April 8, 2024. The minutes of regular scheduled city council meeting held on April 8, 2024. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Oh, no.
Motion made by Councilman Joiner. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second made by Councilman Doltrich. Is there need for discussion? Was that Walker? I'm sorry. Second by Councilman Jabaris Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the motion is approved. Minutes are approved. This time I'll ask with consideration of additions and deletions to the agenda. Right now, I have a request to add to the agenda, a request or a consideration of demolition for 109 on Circle and Battle Road, and a closed session in this meeting for personnel matters. Is there any other items that need to be added or deleted?
Question.
Yes, sir, Councilman Ryan?
Out in program, so we're gonna talk about that today.
Um, I didn't understand. We're gonna talk about that. I think there's a clarification. We can ask the manager when he provides his update.
Thank you.
Unless you want to add it to the agenda specific.
Can we, just in case we need it, please?
Okay, so we have the addition of consideration of demolition for 109 on Circle Drive Housing Program, I suppose. I guess we could call it that. And then closed session, personality at the closure of meeting. I will add those as items 11, 12, and 13 to the agenda, if I have a motion to approve those.
So.
Motion made by Councilman Ryan, second by Councilman Joiner. Is there need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the agenda has been modified accordingly. For that, I'll turn the meeting over to our City Manager, Keith Rogers Jr., for an update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to share that the Rocky Mount Police Department is holding its back-to-school pack of patrol car event. It will be every day this week from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and we are asking for donations so that we may send kids back to school this year with a fully stocked bookbag with supplies. Additionally, our downtown live program continues this summer, and so this Thursday, we will be featuring Chairman of the Board, and again, this starts at 6:00 p.m. on the Imperial Center Law. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our City Manager?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Councilman Ryan?
My understanding that we have two programs that has been launched, urgent repair and house repair, which in those for the citizens, this is very important. One of the priorities of this council, reference to housing.
Yes, that is correct, Councilman. We are accepting applications for those programs.
And my question, I had a question about that, or I can save it for that line item.
Since we got into the agenda, I would suggest that we just discuss it. We'll get item 12.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Manager Ryan related to his update? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right along. Uh, petitions were received from the public. The public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for the public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and values all citizen input. This is an opportunity to express views and concerns about the city of Rocky Mount to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but they refer matters to the city manager, or staff, or staff for follow-up. Time will be monitored, or to give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that sign-ups sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of the city council meeting. An informal organized group is supposed to speak on a common issue. Please designate one person to speak on the group's comments, to present the group's comments. If your comments are regarding an item that is subject to a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak, and time will also be monitored. If your comments are regarding an honorary hearing, additional time may be granted. City councils request you please adhere to following guidelines to complete the sign-in sheet, just comments to the council as a whole, and not to individual council members or staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down or removed from the meeting. Keep comments three minutes. This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Butch Dancy to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. Good on, good evening. I just want to say, I attended the LGC meet a little over a week ago, and I was pretty much pleased with the presentation, Mr. Mayor, and the other two gentlemen. I forget what their names were, but they did a great job. It was worth my while taking time off my work, off my job, to go and to capture their own video, because when I looked at it on the, well, they only show the audio when you go on the LGC line, so I wanted to see it for myself. And I think the ones that was on Zoom, they couldn't even see the book in the room. But again, y'all did a great job. There was too many people there, but they didn't have to say much anything, so I don't know how they were doing, but what comes to my attention is, they are far away, the State Treasurer made it clear that he had been following Rocky Mount since 2016, and it was obvious that he has an issue with Rocky Mounts. And so that, I have flashback to the event center parking deck and a hotel. At that time, we know what's the name, the state order, the best was on the LGC commission, and so there goes how Rocky Mount is not, did not get a chance to go to before the LGC board, and they would not have gotten a chance to go before the board this time if it had not been for Ryan Penny and our opponent, First Black State Order to Jessica Holmes. So again, I was pleased, but now waiting to see when the hotel and parking day is gonna come back on the agenda, because maybe the State Treasurer have got over his ego with Rocky Mount. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public comments portion. Brings us to item number eight, which is consideration of the consent agenda. I'm asking for a motion to be inclusive of approval of or assessment contract, authorize the mayor and city court to execute contract on behalf of the city to approve addition to the CIP and to adopt resolutions and ordinances as listed. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Joiner, second by Councilman Doltrich. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The consent agenda passes. That brings us to item number nine on our agenda, which is consideration of a resolution of intent to enter into a lease agreement with asset payer, building business in his Yaba Group, aim for the city-owned property at 207 East Thomas Street. It's a five-year lease with an automatic renewal for one successive term of five years. Annual rent is $42,000. The renewed lease term will increase by 4% to $44,100. Initial term be from August 26 of 2024 through August 26 of 2029. Renewal term be August 26 of 2029 through August 26 of 2034. With this, the resolution will authorize the city court to advertise proposed agreement pursuant to North Island General Statute 168-272. This item was deferred from the last meeting, and so this time I'll look for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Who to adopt the motion? Do we have a discussion?
Yes, sir. Councilman Blackwell's made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Joiner. This time, we'll enter into discussion. I'll recognize you, Councilman Blackwell, since you have the first one to say you'd like to hear.
Okay, great. First of all, very excited that we have folks who are interested in helping Rocky Mount to expand, grow our footprint downtown and throughout our city. I'm very happy to see that. And I'm also interested in ensuring that the same spirit which we're recruiting, this restaurateur and successful entrepreneur to downtown Rocky Mount today. I'm thankful for that. Thankful for the creativity, for the dedication, and for the resources that the city is willing to put into that. I'd like to see that same effort and energy and resources allocated to other individuals and efforts in downtown Rocky Mount, and find ways to incent property, not just owners, but the renters of property. We spent a lot of money in trying to get the stock up to par. As we noted before, we said several buildings are literally, you know, built in 19, early 1900s, late, I'm sorry, yeah, late 1800s, early 1900s, and to be able to not just renovate the buildings, but we also, we want to grow downtown, need to incent with working capital, with improvements for renters that come in as well into our downtown. It takes more, because the condition of the properties are worse, and we still only have one downtown. So, but I'd like to be able to see in our discussions at community hall, Mr. Mayor Proton, and Mr. Mayor, in our discussions with our manager and with his team, I'd like to see a robust program related to recruitment and retention of who we have downtown. I'd like to know how much money we have allocated to do that, and I also feel that with this level of investment, which we are looking at as a key stakeholder in our downtown, we really want to make sure it works. So I'm thankful that our team put thought into ensuring that we had a stable restaurateur who has success at that location for the next, how many years? 10 years, right? That's a 10-year commitment, which is great. I'd like to see that same effort and energy, and we look for that same level of investment when we talk about current entrepreneurs who actually live here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Yes, Councilman Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. In reviewing this information that's in our agenda today, I went back, and two weeks ago, we had this on the agenda, and the matter was deferred, as she so stated. But there are three pages of this proposed lease agreement that are not included in today's agenda. If you take a look at the lease agreement, it goes from page 19 to 23, and then skips over to 22 to 23, and then the signature of page 23 to 23. Let me bring to the public's attention the three pages that are not in the rental agreement that we have before us today. Appendix A, which goes at regularly about what the city is going to be doing and going to be working with the proposed landlord. By the way, it's great to see that we have interest from an out-of-town restaurant person coming to downtown Rocky Mount. But Appendix 1, landlord will purchase, replace, or repair the following restaurant equipment, and it gives a list. Number 2, landlord will purchase, replace, or repair the following furnitures and restaurant fixtures. And then 3, landlord will perform the consummated improvements, et cetera. Appendix 2, I'll read a couple of items. Tenant will make other improvements to enhance for the business operations such as exterior lighting and awnings. All improvements effect to the building are eligible for reimbursement to the tenant. The total estimated cost of tenant improvements is not to exceed $100,000. And all tenant install improvements shall come attached to the property. We're assuming to be responsible for up to $100,000. But such language is not in this proposed lease before us today. I question why was these three pages omitted?
Thank you, Councilman Harris. Is there a comment? Yes, sir, Councilman Joiner. I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell, Councilman Harris. And this item was deferred today, and I've had an opportunity to visit the restaurant and to see some of the operation. Let's say that it's very community grounded, and it's very inclusive, supporting community work within the city that area in there. And I hope that we will look forward to those same relationships that its owner has presented in other areas of operation. So I've been very pleased with what I've seen.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ryan?
Yes, I just want to acknowledge that, I mean, I am in support of helping anyone who would like to move in our downtown area, or his restaurant, or any other business. But I also would like to see that same energy when it comes to our local residents or business owner. We have a particular restaurant and comedy club that's about to open in our downtown area, and they were trying to get help from the city in reference to opening up that particular restaurant, that venue. And it was told to the person that we didn't have any funding available to help this young man. It's probably because of the prior owner, or the owner had already used the grants that the city had offered. I don't know if it was a five-year wait period before anyone else could apply for a grant, but this is an entrepreneur that want to move into a building and to bring a eatery down to in our downtown area and a comedy club. I would like for this council to direct our manager and staff. If the owner of the building have used the side grants, the DBA, the roof, or whatever grant that, grants that we have to offer, that staff will come up with a grant for entrepreneur. It could be equipment, from equipment to sprinkler, to whatever it would take to get that business into that space. And so where I do support this, I also would like to support the young man and his partner coming into our downtown with a seafood restaurant and comedy club. And I think it's embarrassing, it's a shame that we could help outside businesses and cannot help our local, local businesses here in Rocky Mount. So I would like to at least hear from the council, and that we would give the direction of the manager and the staff to craft a grant or opportunities for local residents that can benefit from funding from the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ryan. I'll recognize you. Councilman Doltrich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I echo with what Councilman Harris just spoke about, and then I would recommend, we own a lot of properties, and we got, we provide a lot of leases, and I think fundamentally, the city of Rocky Mount should not be in leasing business, and, but we are. And, but we do have leases that we go into, we have a history of entering leases, and we have a history of leases that they're broken, or for whatever reason, don't work out. The city historically has ended up, for lack of a better term, eating a lot of expenses involved in these leases. Mr. Manager, I'm a vote and support this, but what I'm gonna ask you and your staff to do, and I know we have a third party that overlooks these leases, but with whatever's in the lease, whether it's to make sure there's no mold, to make sure that, you know, whatever's attached to the building, when the tenant leaves, that whatever's there and is supposed to be there stays there, because this is a city-owned building, and that's why we're investing the money we are in this building, because it is city-owned. But I'm requesting that we have someone go through our leases and make sure, put it on the calendar, and then we go through and we inspect these facilities, whether it's on a monthly, quarterly, biannally, or annual basis, and certainly when the lease comes to an end. So I don't know how the rest of the city council feels about my request, but Mr. Manager, I'm placing that request on you, and hopefully, and not just for this lease, but all the leases.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll recognize you. Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you. So, everything I prefaced has been fleshed out and built out, and if you understand the stock, the buildings that are there, the Douglas Block is probably the most renovated building, and now the oldest renovation that we have. So it's coming towards probably another level. All of those buildings are probably coming to another level of need to be refreshed, and ensure that our capital that we own, as Mr. Doltrich pointed out, is appropriate, so that the tenants are not having to deal with unsafe environmental issues, especially since many of those properties are food-based. Nobody wants to smell musty when you're trying to eat, right? So that's really important. But also, the point that Mr. Knight brought out, Councilman Knight brought out about seafood restaurant downtown, that's a great example of exactly what I was saying, is that if we helped to help bring the building up to basic standards, that gentleman has invested out of his own pocket $60,000 to continue the renovation that was needed, plus, you know, make that building suitable for his own purposes, and he's still not enough. We really need an aggressive working capital strategy for downtown, and I'm not recommending that the city have to pay for everything, but we are responsible for leading the recruitment and designing, I believe, the approach and the packages and the relationships that are required to see a beautiful downtown like Rocky Mount really jump, jump off. It's gonna take more than just sort of random piecemeal here and there. And I also am concerned that the creativity of our team, while it's great that you look for something new, it's also great to work with what's already here, too. So I am, so perhaps Mr. Mayor Proton, what you can do to assist the manager in having a conversation with us, let's maybe schedule this on committee hall meeting, and then we can talk about details that we'd like to see, and then give the manager clearer directions, so he knows how to marshal his resources as well. I feel that we miss out when we wait for somebody else to do the work, and then they come back, they do a lot of hard work, and come back, and it's not quite what we want. And I think it's wise to at least set some parameters up front, and say, well, look, this, 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 and this. Give the team something to focus on, and then have them come back and have us review it, and then we can tweak and move forward. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. Councilman Joiner?
Yes. Once we get these buildings up to par, and we come to an end of the lease, who responsibility to make sure that these buildings are left in the condition that we started out in, that we don't have to go back and reversion all over?
These buildings are city-owned properties, so within the lease, it covers the maintenance, and the condition of the building should be left in once the lease is up, so that's covered in the lease. But these are city-owned properties, and so it's our responsibility to maintain that appropriate term throughout the lease, regardless of who the less he is.
Yes, sir, Councilman Harris. I'll recognize you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want a clarification. Is Appendix A going to be included in this rental agreement? Is Appendix 1, which stipulates landlord's responsibility, and Appendix 2, tenant's responsibility regarding improvements, are they going to be in the rental agreement?
Yes, Councilman. As you correctly pointed out, those appendixes, those appendices were included on the last agenda when this was deferred, so I think it just maybe got lost in translation, but the items that you read are intended to be included in the lease. And I would just remind council that tonight, we are advertising, and so council, it will be back before council to approve, so we will double-check and make sure that the clerk's office has the correct document.
Well, that clarifies my, my question is, it shouldn't have been overlooked. It shouldn't have been included?
That's correct.
Mayor, call the question.
All right, question has been called. We have a motion and a second, and there is this lease, and to advertise it, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, item 9 carries. It brings us to item 10, which is consideration of a resolution approving the settlement of fiscal year 2023, 2024, taxes due and collected, appointing Latasha Hollis as collector of revenue, and authorizes the collector of revenue to collect taxes for fiscal year commencing July 1 of 2024. This is due to retirement by current collector of revenue. And so, anyway, I'm asking for a motion to adopt this resolution.
Oh, oh.
Motion made by Councilman Joiner, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman TJ Walker. Need for, I guess I'll recognize you, Councilman Ryan?
Yes, when reading this, giving this
Yes, when reading this, it's giving us all the authority to collect taxes. In order to collect taxes, we should also give the authority to, if there's a lien on the property, any authority to collect. So I think we should include that language, give this authority to release liens as well.
I don't have more than statute 105, 373 in front of me, but what does that authorize? Maybe we'll include it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pulling it up. Generally speaking, the authority to collect taxes includes the authority to enforce the taxes and deal with those kind of issues. If the council would prefer to expressly say that, I don't particularly see any harm there, it's up to the council.
I'm just reading this, and a lot of times when collecting, especially on landlord or people deceased, if you have liens, that that's part of the collection process. Just want to make sure that.
If I may, that is correct. This was intended to be a perfunctory item due to the retirement of staff, but we are currently actively collecting taxes, liens, and any other monies owed to the city through the Business and Collection Services Agency.
So could we amend that and let it reflect that as well, according to what our attorney dismissed?
All right, so the request to make sure that we add specifically, give the ability to place liens on the property, whether or not that's mentioned?
Really?
If it is, I forgot who made the motion in the second, but would you amend the motion, Councilman Joyner, to include that?
Yes.
Okay, so then what we're running at is the express ability to collect, that use liens as a tool of the collection of taxes as it relates to the duties of Latasha Hall, Councilman TJ Walker, again, if still second.
Yes, sir. I think it was also released.
And relieved, that's why that was the first one. Yes, correct. Thank you for that clarification. If any other need for a conversation or clarification on this matter, hearing on all code, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Okay. Emergency item 11, which is a request for demolition of 109 Owen Circle. I will, I believe, Councilman Blackwell, you brought this.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for my peers, thank you, and to residents. I was submitted, presented a present, a petition from neighbors in Battleboro who live on Owen Circle. This property that you can see the pictures of, thank you for slowing down, this is what they've been looking at for the last two years. It was a property damaged by fire two years ago. It's been through several iterations of code enforcement and I believe it's at the end, the owner has collected the insurance and moved to another town within our region, but not within the city limits of Rocky Mountain. And there are no plans to demolish the property, presents unsafe opportunities, it's dangerous. Who wants to wake up every morning and look at that? And it also has vermin and other things coming from it, and when you walk past it, it smells really bad. It's an environmental hazard, it's unsightly, it's unseemly. And when we talk about needing demolition within our core city communities, this is a very good reason why. And the staff, I mean, the staff is informing people. The reason I'm having to bring it is because the staff is informing people that the city has no plans to demolish properties within the city limits of Rocky Mountain. And if that's the case, then we'll just, I'll have to continue to bring these properties directly here because the neighborhood is paying the cost and the price for unsightly, dangerous, deficient, and embarrassing property. So I like to ask the council, I like to make a motion to adopt the demolition ordinance for this property, 109 Owens Circle in the Battleboro community and the city of Rocky Mountain.
All right, got a motion made by Councilman Blackwell, second. I think there's a fight over here, it's going to be first, Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Councilman Dawkins, I'll recognize you.
Councilman Blackwell, I'm fully in favor of particular properties such as, demolition processes, properties such as this. I know in Councilman Harris's ward, there was one for three, four, maybe even five years was like this. I would be curious to know the process of going through and tearing down these houses. I know there's a legal process that we have to go through, and I'd be curious with this 109 Owen Circle, where we are in that process. And even if we do approve this, one, can we tear it down because it's still technically someone's property? I think we have to go through the rules to get through that. I'm not exactly sure of the process, but certainly in favor of it. And it's not only in here, but it's all over Rocky Mountain where we have this issue. But it does come down to some, to money. And I'd be curious also, would like to know, I'd be curious, would like to know the expense of demolition of this. And once we demolish this, I'm sure we have some sort of lien on this property. Once it's sold, or before it could be sold, that we at least recoup any monies that we possibly have on this. And is there legal action that we can take against the property owner to recoup our money or even have them, we'll just recoup our money because this thing needs to go ahead and come down?
I don't change that. I mean, I've got a bunch of answers, but I'm not sure they're right. I'll turn it over to council, how about that? I'll recognize, Councilman Harris.
So, Councilman Dawkins, you're correct that the city's authority to just go in and tear down someone's property is limited significantly by statute. There are, the city does have some authority to summarily abate public health nuisances. I know that authority in Rocky Mountain has been exercised to demolish property. My suggestion would be to perhaps direct staff to make sure, before we just order this torn down, make sure that we can justify that. Short of that, there are other processes that can be used under the statutes to demolish. Each has its own notice and hearing opportunity. So we essentially have to identify the basis and then move forward based on the government procedure. As to the cost of demolition, you're correct that almost under any process that the city goes in and demolishes, the cost of demolition are taxable to the property owner. If not paid, it's a lien on the property. At some point, that lien can be foreclosed upon. But my suggestion when we're talking about specific properties is that we have a little bit of time, if the materials prepared pretty clearly look like this needs to be demolished. But before we jump to that step, I would request an opportunity to at least confirm which authority we're going to use and go from there.
So, Councilman Blackwell, would you be willing to maybe rephrase the motion somewhat on allocating the money to that?
What about this? Why don't we have the staff, when they complete these processes and it's clear that a property needs to be demolished, the staff should be bringing that to city council, not city council having to take methodology like this and almost impose it upon the staff. That's been the process in Rocky Mountain until now. So the questions that our attorney has wisely framed has already taken place. Now you're asking me to go find that information out, that's not my job. That's the job of the manager and his team. Somebody gets paid to do that. We got plenty of properties that should be demolished, that have gone through the process, but the last step is not taken, which means come to the city council and ask for the properties to be demolished. What's the point of going through the process if the process is not completed? Now, we've had budget, we've budgeted prior to this budget, hundreds of thousands of dollars to take properties down. So when we discuss housing in our next conversation, you still have to talk about cleaning up these neighborhoods so we can bring new housing or renovated housing into public. I would also recommend that we put back on the table the land trust opportunities, which we started talking about, which we deferred until we got more information. And this would be a wonderful opportunity if we need to start collecting properties like this, that the owners have no interest, no willingness to do something about this. The neighbors should not be held hostage because somebody technically has a right because they own the property. They own the property and they're creating problems for everyone else. And the city needs to step in and say, well, take it off your hands because we know what to do with it.
So I hate to just let drop this matter.
So you're asking me, so I will.
At least allocate the money and take some sort of process with the timeline, I think would be appropriate.
I'm deferment this tonight.
I'm just still surprised that we had this conversation. We had this conversation in depth months and months ago. It's not the staff not doing the work, but when the staff do the work, city manager has to sign off on or bring it to the council. So we need to direct this to Mr. Keith Rogers Jr. because I brought several houses, and he was adamant about not demolishing the house. And to our new attorney, we have an ordinance that gives the council the authority when it goes through the process to demolish houses. There's nothing new to Rocky Mountain.
So, Councilman, if I could, keep it back on subject here, if we can modify this motion or dropping you the one I'm calling.
Well, we modify the motion that if this particular property, 109, wings court, if it has gone through the proper process, then it needs to come to the council so the council can approve demolition. But what I, so Councilman Blackwell, is it me and the motion, since you made the motion?
Yeah, Councilman, I did make, I mean, Blackwell did make the motion. He would advise that that would be helpful, Councilman Blackwell, and points revision decision. That's what I need to say.
So I'd like to revise the motion for the demolition of 109 Owen Circle in the Battleboro community and Rocky Mountain, that we would ensure that the legal process has been adhered to and completed, that we also allocate the appropriate funding to demolish the property and place a lien on the property that the city would be able to enforce when appropriate.
Okay. Who made the second? Councilman Joyner, is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
So we're now voting on a motion to ensure legal process is taken care of as it relates to 109 Owen Circle, that we'll allocate funding for demolition of that once that process has been deemed complete and that we will place a lien on that particular property to recoup any expenditures the city has made going forward. I have a motion in a second, council discussion, I'll recognize you, Councilman Harris.
This is no aid regarding the recommendation, which has been seconded. But Councilman Knight brought this issue up, as he stated several, several months ago. And I made the statement back then that it would be nice if we could have a listing of all properties that have suffered damage due to fire. We, as a council, need to know what we are staring at because I can envision every month a council member is going to have a petition to come to the council to vote on this particular piece of property needs to be demolished. So I am asking the manager, maybe next COW meeting or whenever, could provide us with a detailed list of all burned properties and what, if any, legal process has been started for each of the properties so we can have a better indication of what we are staring at. And lastly, I would like for the manager to let us know, I think demolition in this year's budget is $200,000, I'm not sure. But Councilman Blackwell mentioned that in previous years, or maybe this was Councilman Knight, that in previous years, money was budgeted and if it is not expensed, how much rollover is there? So exactly what are the dollars that we have approved to demolish houses?
Good, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Harris. So we are moving on, point a little bit of motion in a second, like to bring it back to center, but with that said, just because it's been brought up, I'll give it forward to the manager if he wants to answer some of those questions. Of course, just leaving that as a dangling idea out there.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add a little context to the discussion, not to debate the merits, but I just wanted to, for the public particularly, because it is our staff that is in the communities that are working to make sure that we do code enforcement so that we can improve our communities. And so I just wanted to remind the council that the three properties that were previously discussed, that council directed be demolished, those three properties have been demolished. So we have been adhering to council's desire and we have, Mr. Attorney, have been working to make sure that all those legal specifications have been met in order to do so. Additionally, I know that our staff has done right-alongs with the mayor and several council members throughout the wards and throughout the city to identify any additional concerns that the council may have so that we can compile a list and to try to be strategic as well as proactive to the concerns that are brought up, not only by the council, but the concerns that we get directly from citizens. So again, I am happy to entertain any additional houses or properties. The property that's before us tonight, this is the first time that it has been brought to my attention in this regard. So we're happy to look into it. But I think it's important that we, particularly because we also get, I know the council gets feedback from residents and constituents, I know that our staff does as well. So I just wanted to add that additional context and we will certainly be happy to bring back a comprehensive list and an action plan to the council at a future COW.
So I just, I have a concern, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Manager, you're saying then that this property is going all the way through the entire process? You have not seen anything related to it? Your process is not, the process is not called for your eyes to sign off on the final order? Are you saying that where in your, so in your review process of devastated, deteriorated, damaged properties, where is the interjection of your perspective?
Well, I really don't think that it is a perspective matter. It is whether the properties meet the specification and what needs to happen in terms of enforcement.
When it comes to your desk, as you just said, this is the first time you've heard it, saying that.
That's correct.
And the community is saying that they, that this property, and I don't know because your staff has got to determine what the process is, but the community has said that your department leaders are saying that it has gone through the process almost at the end, but that there is no present priority on demolition. And if that's true, if that's a perspective the community has, it's not mine because I haven't talked to anybody yet. But if they come to me saying that, and your team is saying that to the public, where do they get that impression?
Well, again, Councilman, I'm not sure exactly how to answer the impression question. I'm saying that the item that's before us tonight, the property, this is the first time that it's brought to my attention. And so I'm happy to look into it to see where it is in the process. Again, I wanted to make my comments tonight just to provide clarity that the staff is working to enforce code and to demolish properties where appropriate, not to get into a debate of the merits. But I mentioned prior that there are certain requirements that must be met in order for demolition. So there's not a holding list that we are holding for our move forward. forward demolition.
Okay, so I'm not debating merits, I'm asking the process, when do you approve and when do you deny?
Again, Councilman, the process does not, depending on the code that is used, does not require additional approval from the council or the manager, depending on the type of, uh, demolition that you're using. So what I was trying to express is that it is hard to answer a question about a property that is brought forward in a council meeting tonight without looking for, looking to see what the issues are, and it's going to be on a case by case basis. But I wanted to, uh, confirm with the council that we are working code enforcement. There is not a, uh, a, a pause or a, a difference of direction in terms of enforcing code, which includes demolition of property. Uh, in our recently adopted budget, there is a line item that remains for demolition. And so I know that the cost per house, uh, may vary, but we have budgeted resources to do demolition, and I was just reminding the council that we just recently completed the three that council previously, uh, asked us to look into and that we are continuing to work to, to do so. So I just wanted to provide that context.
Thank you. Now, I'll just take the rest of my conversation to next.
Yeah, that'd be great, and, and I think your points were made, I think Councilman's point made, that we want to listen to what's out there, where it is in the process, to be able to actually have active conversation about it. But right now, I do have a motion on the floor and a second, as it relates to ensuring that we go through our process, the process that's made, as it relates to 109 Owen Circle, that we allocate funding for the demolition and that we place a lien for any expenditures associated or incurred by the city of Rocky Mountain property. I have a motion and a second. Is there any conversation relative to that particular motion?
I do.
Yes, sir, Councilman Knight, I'll recognize you.
Just, just one second, I know that you want to get through this. Um, we had a very extensive conversation reference to this. We have a city ordinance or policy, um, that entails everything that we just stated, and so we're not, um, tearing down our houses, um, legally or wrongfully. And when the community code, uh, submits, uh, a list of houses or a house, it has to go to, uh, this Emily, before that was Will Deaton. Will Deaton signed it off and he sends it to the city manager. So if you got those three things, two staff members doing that, and it gets to your desk, Mr. Rogers, and you decide not to bring it to this status, then houses would not be demolished according to our ordinance. I have said this over and over again, and so if we go back and read our own ordinance and follow our steps, then the council knows what our authority is, what we can and cannot do. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question, uh, I have a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. I've heard society number 12, which is housing program, I have no specifics on that, but I guess a general conversation point. Who brought that forward? I cannot remember. Councilman Knight, uh, I'll give you four.
Yes, I mean, I want to clear up something. Uh, last month, I guess, I asked a question that's related to community development, about a position, community engagement manager, uh, which I am not seeing that position, uh, job position in our, uh, compensation in comp plan, uh, that we approved. And then I asked, the city manager wouldn't give me the correct answer, and Councilman Walker answered that and said it was in the, uh, plan that we approved. We asked the clerk to go back and do the research, and upon her research, uh, which she found that it was not. So first of all, I hope that the council needs to ratify this position of community engagement manager. If it's not ratified and voted upon this council, then that position should not be in operation. Secondly, uh, in April, if you go back and read the minutes that we just approved, April the 8th, it details a lengthy conversation about the housing grants that we currently have. But on today, it was released that we're only offering two programs. Now, the council has approved four housing programs for our citizens. It was voted upon, here they are, correct bottom, these are administrative policies. So out of those four, um, city manager and staff decided to eliminate two without the authority of this city council. Then the policy that we approved, which were originally a grant, now they are already loan, which we don't have a policy to dictate that. Also, the amount has gone from 15,000 to 50,000, and we have no, again, what is it called? Madam Clerk? Administrative, administrative policy. And we have residents coming down to city hall, and I took the time to come down here today and starting to register for these programs. Our last council meeting, we asked the manager and his staff to go back. First of all, they said that we approved this. And Madam Clerk, did you find that anywhere in the minutes? Thank you. Uh, when the consortium or the consultant came about the home funds, we had a presentation by the, uh, coordinator, surprisingly, and not the director or the deputy director. And just to this council, I've never seen a staff person who was not at the department head make a presentation to this council. I've never seen that. And the information was unclear, and Councilman Harris and others asked the staff to go back, and in an additional email, we asked the manager to break down those programs and who applied. Uh, we had waiting lists, and people got letters saying they were approved, and then they got letters saying we didn't have the money. During the budget session, I asked the question, why we have money? And the court, and the answer that was given by the city manager that the citizen were not applying for, that is not true. The citizen was told that we were not offer, uh, we were not offering those programs. So today, we got two programs that have not been approved by this council. We got two programs that are not being offered, when we heard from citizens, it was the matching rebate program that's been approved by the council in this document, and the workforce housing that was approved by this council that we're not offering. And I asked that you would go back and bring that back. And I don't think the authority lies with any manager to overrule this council without coming back to this board. Now, if we as a board don't do what we're supposed to do, I'm going to say it, I'm not going to be disrespected. It's on any individual of you all, but I'm just sick and tired of it. So how can we offer these programs that we have not approved?
So, Councilman Knight, is there a motion in here somewhere?
It should be another motion because it's insubordinate, because he continues to do Now, if, 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 if he can defy this council, how in the heck his staff and employees can respect his authority? And I'm sick and tired of it. And who gives your authority or your staff to go to any school of government without coming to our attorney before you, which is Jeff Rose, Horton Spruill, with over 40 years of experience? Now, I have this right, this crafty, you might not give me a time, but this, these programs were well thought out approximately six to eight years ago, and it was a multi-faceted to address a number of housing, housing challenges that we have had. And we went through that 80% AMI, up to 125 AMI, but we were addressing, if you look at the statute, it gives lens, the authority that we can address blighted area in our community, and Chris Miller, who sat in that seat, said if we don't address neighborhoods like North Green, who have houses that are starting to be deteriorated, if we don't do something now, they're going to be dilapidated, and then they're going to come to the council to be demolished. So with the brain trust of Peter Barney, uh, David Cones, Chris Miller, myself, Lamont, which is Judge Lamont now, and others, Ruben, which we had a robust conversation about how to address the needs of our community, and now all the things that we have put in place are going to be rolled back 20 years, 30 years? And our citizen who elected us has given us the things that we need to know to help this community, through our community, our neighborhood association. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop it here. But Mayor, I'm tired of being disrespected as a city council member for over 20 years, not bragging, but at least give me some kind of respect in my intellect and the history that I bring to this table, that some of you who just got here, who never lived here and still don't live here, don't understand the needs of our people, but they want to roll back the program and the benefits that the people have worked for all these years now need our help? And it's not right. It is not right for this board, if we sit here and allow this to happen. One person snatch away something that was crafted to benefit this community, and we are mirrored all across the state when it comes to new market tax credit, historic tax credit, or whatever, Rocky Mount. So now, I guess we're a bunch of dummies and hillbillies, that they think we don't know jack. And it's, it, it's just sickening to me, to me. You get folks to come here, I'm not saying all, I would say folk, but they come and they, Rocky Mount, Mayberry, they don't know what they doing, they eating, they just, they ain't on sandwich, we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless, unless there's a, Council, yes, I think your point's been well made, and, uh, I appreciate your thoughts. With that said, it needs to be a motion here or some direction on this, otherwise I, I feel like it's probably time to go into a closed session.
But I'd like for Mr. Mayor...
I'll recognize you, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you, sir. I'd like, I'd like for us to continue this discussion in community homing, the stockage, and I would like us to be able to outline, um, what exactly it is that may be in advance, uh, so we know how to plan and how to prepare. Um, perhaps all of us should be polled again, we've already done it one time, but we've received insufficient response to what we asked. Um, let's do it one more time, ready, dance again, and, um, have that detailed conversation in committee hall and commit the entire committee hall, so no one feels pressed to have to, you know, make a 15 minute presentation, 15 minute conversations. Go ahead and schedule a meeting where all we do is talk about houses. Can we do that?
I don't think that, but, uh, I don't remember.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
I, I've already spoken with, uh, the manager and the attorney, so we can give them a heads up, so we can have this community, the whole meeting towards this that was put in place, I think an email was sent two weeks ago, so I don't know if we're going to do it on the next community hall or following, I'm not sure about that, um, but it's already been put in place.
What I said, I would love to entertain the motion, go into a closed session.
Exactly.
Who was first? The thought group, second was Peter Wong.
Just have him come.
Wish him a compliment. Make a very short, please.
I want to, uh, I want to thank our visiting staff and, uh, our citizens, city manager of Daniel, and also Joe Dunn and Parks and Rec, as they put together the first, um, quarter of the event, Downtown Day Night Event Center, uh, great event, it's probably one of the, um, most extraordinary events you're going to see in Rocky Mount, where you can pay $40 for a general ticket, 85 for gourmet dinner, three hours of entertainment, uh, with mainstream, uh, comedian artists from all across the nation. So I just wanted to thank you to our visiting staff, uh, to our, our staff here at the city, also Parks and Rec, our job we're done, and looking forward to the next quarter, uh, then also looking forward to this housing conversation, I think that helps with, as we heard earlier about the demolitions, uh, I think one of the issues, I know I've been discussing it five years, prior to that, the conversation sort of changed, where we boarded up houses, uh, then we stopped, uh, then we demolished houses, and then we stopped due to how the communities began to look with houses and gaps in communities, so I think in the housing conversation that's been there, we provide some clear direction, um, that matches allocation funding that we have, I think it will keep us from, uh, running into two D's, E's, B's errors. But again, thank you.
Got it. Motion and second, go into a closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. We're now in closed session. We'll be having a committee round.
Well, I need to, uh, be put on the table, uh, a motion on getting rid of city manager for his support mission. Every meeting is the same thing. I will do this and get back what you do. When in the hell is they going to deal with this guy, as Andre might say, he has been very, very, very disrespectful to this council. And what I think is, uh, going back to what I said earlier, uh, during the public comments about their work, um, I see the same thing going on with city manager. Obviously, he's trying to prove a point or something, and it looks like he has an issue with our certain council members. So we have serious problems, and he needs to be taken care of. A motion need to be made, that this guy is removed from all of the, as city manager. And then on the very end, uh, the energy being put into, uh, what happened downtown, no energy into, no energy into, um, um, all the things that they talked about, and no comment. I hope this, um, got you.